Call to order this regular meeting of the Minnehaha County Planning Commission, and I will begin with a few introductory comments. As a courtesy to everyone here tonight, please make sure that all cell phones have been silenced. Please note that tonight's Planning Commission meeting will be rebroadcast via CityLink and posted on the www minnehaha county.gov site for viewing by the general public. Any final action taken on the conditional use permit applications tonight will take effect five working days following this meeting unless a written appeal of the Planning Commission's decision is filed in the Planning Office by Tuesday, September 2nd, 2025 at 5:00 PM. In the event of an appeal, the decision will be referred to the County Commission for a hearing on Tuesday, September 16th, 2025 at or after 9:00 AM. The affected parties will be notified of the meeting date, and meetings of the County Commission are held in this same room. Any action taking on the rezoning application during the public hearing tonight is a recommendation that will be forwarded to the County Commission for another public hearing on Tuesday, September 23rd, 2025 at or after 9:00 AM. Meetings of the County Commission are held in this same room. First on the agenda is public input. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on an item that is not on the agenda? At this time, the Planning Commission will consider the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are perceived to be non-controversial and meet all the requirements of the codes and regulations. The consent agenda will be acted on in one motion with no public hearing on the items unless a member of the public, the Commission, or staff requests the item be removed from the consent agenda. First, I'll read each item on the consent agenda and ask if there are any issues or comments from the Planning Commission or the audience. If any member of the Planning Commission or the audience would like to be heard on the item, please raise your hand and the item will be moved to the regular agenda to allow you to address the Commission later in the meeting. Any items remaining on the consent agenda will be approved by the Planning Commission with the conditions recommended by staff. Item number one is the approval of the minutes of the July 28th, 2025 meeting. Item number two is conditional use permit 25-44 to exceed 2,400 square feet of accessory building space requesting 3,600 square feet on the property legally described as Lot 8, Songbird Acres, 2nd Edition, Northwest Quarter, Section 32, Township 102 North, Range 50 West. That is in Benton Township. Petitioner and property owner is Mark Paz, located at 26122 South Robin Drive. Anyone from the Commission, staff, or audience wish to be heard on this item? Okay, so item number two has to be removed to the regular agenda. Item number three, conditional use permit 25-45 to allow an accessory dwelling unit, and it's an ADU on the property legally described as Track 2, Strux Edition, South Half, Southeast Quarter, Section 7, Township 103 North, Range 52 West. That is in Clear Lake Township. Petitioner and property owner are Todd Struck and Linda Redding, located at 45490252 Street. Anyone from the staff, Commission, or audience wish to be heard on this item? Item number four is conditional use permit 25-46 to transfer one building eligibility from the Northwest Quarter to the Southwest Quarter, to the Southwest Quarter, the Northwest Quarter, within the Northwest Quarter, the Southwest Quarter, and the Southwest Quarter, the Northwest Quarter. There is an exception of Robert's Edition and of exception Section 22, Township 102 North, Range 47 West. That is in Red Rock Township. Petitioner and property owner is Paul Cidic, location approximately two and a half miles north of Valley Springs. Anyone from the Commission, staff, or audience wish to be heard on this item? Item number five is conditional use permit 25-48 to transfer one building eligibility from the Southwest Quarter, the Northwest Quarter, within the West Half, the Northwest Quarter, Section 12, to Track 5, Powers Edition, Southeast Quarter, Section 11, all within Township 102 North, Range 49 West. That is in Mapleton Township. Petitioner is Casey and Megan Finnicum. Property owner, Casey and Megan Finnicum, and Edwin and Galen Powers, located at 47690258 Street. Anyone from the Commission, staff, or audience wish to be heard on this item? Item number six is conditional use permit 25-49 to transfer three building eligibilities from the Northeast Quarter. There is an exception of These Edition and of exception to Track 1A, Olson's Edition, Northwest Quarter, all within Section 17, Township 101 North, Range 47 West. That is in Valley Springs Township. Petitioner is Voucher Holdings LLC. Property owner is Voucher Holding LLC with Linda Elliott, located approximately two miles southwest of Valley Springs. Anyone from the Commission, staff, or audience wish to be heard on this item? Item number seven is conditional use permit 25-50 to transfer two building eligibilities from the West Half, the Southwest Quarter. There is an exception of H-1 and of exception, Section 10, to Track 2, Opelone Edition, Northeast Quarter, Section 15, all within Township 104 North, Range 50 West. That is in Burke Township. Petitioner is Jason Brown. Property owner is Jason Jacqueline Brown and William and Diane Brown, located approximately four miles west of Dell Rapids. Anyone from the Commission, staff, or audience wish to be heard on this item? Item number eight, conditional use permit 25-52 to transfer one building eligibility from the Northeast Quarter, the Southeast Quarter, to the Southeast Quarter, the Southeast Quarter, within the East Half, Southeast Quarter, Section 16, Township 102 North, Range 50 West. That is in Benton Township. Petitioner and property owner is Winterstein Family LLC. Location is 25885469th Avenue. Anyone from the Commission, staff, or audience wish to be heard on this item? Commissioners? Looks like the only item that needs to be removed is item number two.
I'll make a motion to approve consent agenda items, item one, and then three through eight.
Second. Okay, I have a motion and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. If your item has been approved, you're free to go. We'll move on to the regular agenda, and item number two.
Good evening, Commissioners. Mason Stassen from the County Planning Office. There we go. Yes, so item number two is a conditional use permit to exceed the accessory building area on a property that the petitioner is requesting 3,600 square feet. Currently, there is a small detached garage on the property that would be removed, and the petitioner is requesting to build a new 45 by 80 detached garage, which would equal that 3,600 square feet. Staff did perform a site visit on August 7th, and this property is located in the Songberg Acres subdivision, which is a subdivision of about 50 homes along Highway 38 between Hartford and Sioux Falls. Many of the properties in this subdivision do have detached accessory buildings, but this would be the largest accessory building in the subdivision. The area around the property is mainly continued to be used as agriculture and some quarry uses to the southwest. With every conditional use permit, we do look at six criteria, and I'll just kind of generally go over those. So number one is the effect upon the use and enjoyment of other properties in the immediate vicinity for the uses already permitted and upon property values. The subject property is located in a subdivision of properties with, a lot of the properties in the subdivision are all the same size is what I mean to say, and they already have detached accessory buildings, as mentioned. This will be the largest and may lead to similar requests within the subdivision. Given the rural nature of the subdivision, staff does not find an issue if larger accessory buildings are requested in this subdivision. Number two, that the effect upon the normal and orderly development and improvement of surrounding vacant property for use is predominant in the area. As mentioned, the land around the property is mainly used for agricultural and quarry uses currently, but it is located in the, just outside the joint jurisdiction with Sioux Falls and within the transition area between Sioux Falls and Hartford. So because it's designated as transition area, it's meant to stay, this area is meant to stay as rural until either residential development or city development. This is already in residential development of 50 lots, and allowing this accessory building won't change that rural character in the area. Number three, that utilities, access roads, drainage, and/or other necessary facilities are provided. The proposed building will utilize this existing access on the north edge of the property off of Robin Drive, and the property owner will be required to extend all other necessary utilities to the structure. Number four, that the off-street parking and loading requirements are met. The accessory building will add off-street parking, indoor off-street parking to the site, and the site is large enough to provide any off-street parking that is needed. Number five, that measures are taken to control offensive odor, fumes, dust, noise, vibration, and lighting, inclusive of lighted signs, so that none of these will constitute a nuisance. No commercial business or storage will be allowed in the accessory building at any time, and it will not be allowed to be used as a dwelling at any time, and any public nuisance violations will be addressed upon the Planning Department receiving complaints. Number six, that the health, safety, general welfare of the public in a comprehensive plan. The health, safety, and general welfare should not, of the public, should not be affected by this proposed personal use of this accessory building. As mentioned, this property is located in the transition area within the future land use map of the envisioned 2045 plan, and the primary purpose of this is to maintain the rural landscape until either residential or municipal development, and allowing this accessory building should not change the rural landscape in the area. So with that, staff is recommending approval with seven conditions, and I'll just go over just a couple site pictures here. So here's the site plan. This is the north on this map is looking on the right side of the screen. So Robin Drive is to the west here, the house, so it'll be behind the house and septic system in the northeast corner of the property. So then this is looking to the northeast, looking to the nearest neighbor with the trees here, kind of looking down along the property line down to where the building would be down in this area here, and then kind of just looking at the actual house on the property, and then further down the subdivision. So with that, I'll go back to the site plan probably, and I'm available for any questions.
Any questions for him?
Yeah, I'm sure. This shed goes up. I just wondered about drainage for neighbors there. How would that flow back there, I guess?
Sure. So I guess in general, the drainage kind of flows, I guess I did mention that in the staff report, I forgot to mention it here, but based on the contours, the drainage generally goes this way. Yeah, I guess the angle of the building, most of the, I guess drainage will go this way and this way, so it could, it could affect downstream this way, but a lot of it will also go on to the petitioner's property, I guess. So it won't, it'll be affecting the neighbors the least, because if it was going this way, I guess if it was angled either way, it could in theory affect the neighbors, but the general slope of the hill, you can kind of see it here, isn't...
If you go back to that one picture, I think you can see a little bit.
Yep, you can kind of see the general sloping down this way, but it's kind of a gentle slope. It's not necessarily like a huge drop-off. So yeah, I guess normally with these accessory buildings, typically if they are just built, like if you get like a Morton Building or a Reeves Building like that, they're usually pretty good about not making the drainage in the area largely worse for the neighborhood, but it could impact the drainage slightly, I suppose.
Any other questions for him?
Where's the driveway coming off?
From Robin Drive?
Off the side of the driveway.
Yep, so yeah, this is the north side of the house here, so that lines up with right here on this aerial imagery. So then the driveway kind of extends south into the attached garage, but there's this portion on the north side that kind of steps down here, down to the building there. You can see that, yeah, the hill from where the house is to the backyard is much more of a drop than from the backyard to the neighboring properties, but...
Okay, any other questions for him? Okay, is the petitioner here? Please step forward and state your name and address.
Mark Paz, 26122 South Robin Drive, Sioux Falls.
Go ahead, Becky.
How would you access the building? It looks like it would be, are you, yeah, just how would you access it there?
That site plan kind of shows it too, is that there'll be a garage door on the west side. That orange is all going to be my gravel driveway coming down. It just keeps extending down, and then you can kind of see where the, it steps over. That's the garage door. That's where the garage door is going to be, so.
Can you go back to that other picture, please, Mason? Thank you. So it's just going to extend right next to your house or on the other side of the retaining wall?
No, that retaining wall to my house, it, I can, it's 17 foot right there. That's the driveway going down to the backyard.
All right, thank you.
My lot's the lowest spot, pretty much, and that everything kind of drains to me, so...
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for him?
I'm sorry, I'm struggling quite on the map exactly. I mean, I can see out here, but where on the map is this shop going back by the trees or right next to the house on? I'm just struggling, sorry. Can you just show us, please? I'm trying to find it exactly. Okay, that's what I thought, okay. Just want to make sure I know what I'm looking at.
Okay, anyone else? Thank you. Anyone else care to address this item? Please step forward, state your name and address.
I'm Donna Perry, and address 46713 Meadowlark Lane. My biggest concern with this is just the size of these buildings. Yeah, there's many detached buildings out there. We've been there a long time, and you know, it's a nice residential area, and I know his, at least is going to be in the drop-off area, but I'm just concerned of the aesthetic look in the long term for what that might be. And then two, I have a question. If this is approved for 3,200 square feet, is that going to be the norm then going forward? That anyone out there could build a lot, or an accessory building that large as well?
I guess I'll just answer that. So this one is 3,600 square feet, I guess, just to clarify, not 3,200 square feet, but then, so anybody who wants to exceed the current allowable accessory building size on their lot will still have to apply for a conditional use permit and be evaluated on a case-by-case basis. So it won't be necessarily a precedent in terms of if this one's approved, then everyone in the future will be approved. It'll still be evaluated on a case-by-case, lot-by-lot situation, so.
Okay. So that's my concern. It just seems like really big, and I know we've been blessed, we have about an acre and a half for our lots out there, and it's probably in a lower spot, so it's not going to be so visible from the road, but I'm just concerned about the size. Thank you.
Anyone else care to address this item?
I'm sorry, ma'am, sure, I guess. I'm still on the fence, I guess. I still worry about drainage when you start getting a square footage like that, and you got all the gravel and stuff sloping back there like that. I guess I worry about drainage onto other people. You're taking up a lot of the grass and putting it on, all on steel now, and plus your gravel driveway back there, it really does affect your drainage, how the water's going to flow. Yeah, she right about having a big shed, everybody's going to have one. Yeah, that could happen, but I don't know, I'm still on the fence, I guess. See what you guys have to say about it.
I'm not so concerned about the drainage if Mason's been out there and looked at it and says that it slopes away. And I agree that, I think most people are, that's the trend we are, we have big storage buildings for our toys, and so I'm not opposed to it. And I'm sure this is not the first one we'll have, and probably not the last one that we've had. This is not the first or the last that we will have for people to, conditional use permits to build a little bit bigger. We do them all the time, so maybe not quite this big, but...
Anyone else? I'll consider a motion.
I would approve this as with the conditions that the planning and zoning has put on it, which I'm looking for him.
Cindy, was that a motion?
Yes, that was a motion.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion second to approve conditional use permit 25-44. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We'll move on to... Move on to the regular agenda with rezoning of 25-02 to rezone from A1 Agricultural District to the C Commercial District. The property legally described as Track B, Shears Edition. There is an exception of H-1 and of exception, South Half, Southeast Quarter, Section 23, Township 103 North, Range 49 West. That is in Sberdah Township. Petitioner is Bruce Wallen. Property owner is John Shears, Ransom LLC, approximately one and a half miles east of the 475th Avenue and 254th Street intersection. Scott?
Thank you. Scott Anderson, Planning Director. And as you indicated, this is a rezoning request. They are requesting to rezone about 15 acres from A1 Agriculture to C Commercial. The property is located approximately one and a half miles east of South Dakota Highway 115 and 254th Street. I conducted a site visit on August 5th and observed that the site is already being used for equipment storage and trucking facility. This activity on the site is a violation of the zoning ordinance as the property is zoned A1 Agriculture. The applicant applied for a conditional use permit in 2012, in October. Conditional use permit 12-50 for larger accessory buildings, which you can see on the air photo. A condition of approval was, the condition of approval number two indicated that the building shall be used for the petitioner's personal use. No commercial or business uses or storage shall be allowed. The current activity violates this condition, and the current zoning ordinance does not allow for this use. During the site visit, I also observed several tankers, over 12 tanker trailers, semi trucks, and several personal vehicles parked on the extensive gravel parking lot. And there also appeared that these two larger buildings were being used for office space, storage, or repairs. This does not, and it should be noted that if this zoning request goes forward, the parking lot, or the parking area does not meet the hard surface requirements as outlined in Article 12, Article 15.4 of the zoning ordinance. The continued use for this, the continued use of this property for commercial purposes without hard surfacing the entire driveway in the parking area would be another violation of the zoning ordinance. The applicant also only paid the typical $350 rezoning application fee on July 25th in submitting this application. Article 24.02 of the county zoning ordinance indicates that if any use for which zoning, for which a rezoning is required, is commenced prior to the application for rezoning, the application fee shall be double the regular fee. The applicant has not paid a doubled fee. The applicant shall pay the additional $350 application fee before or prior to the hearing in front of the county commission. The property is located on a county highway, County Highway 122, approximately one and a half miles east of the intersection with County Highway, or South Dakota Highway 115. The closest commercially zoned property is also at this location and is operated, Valen Oil operates a gas station and service facility at this intersection of County Highway 122 and South Dakota Highway 115. The equipment, storage, and truck facility currently operating on this proposed property appears to be part of the business of Valen Oil, as all the semis and tanker trucks were labeled as such. There are two existing buildings on the site, which you can see. Each building is 54 feet by 105 feet. These buildings were permitted as agricultural structures and may not meet the building code for commercial uses. In addition, these buildings are located approximately 265 feet away from an existing single-family residence, which you can see on the photo. Given the large number of tanker trucks from Valen Oil, hazardous materials could be stored in these buildings and on this property, and the number of trucks adjacent to an existing residence that's only 265 feet away is a conflicting land use. So looking at our envisioned 2045 plan, it indicates that the majority of commercial and industrial development should be focused towards municipalities, transition areas, interstate interchanges, and major highway crossings. While this parcel is located on a county highway, it meets none of the ideal, of the identified areas for commercially development to occur. The rezoning would be a spot zoning in an area that is primarily agricultural in use and would set a future precedent for a rezoning request. The proposed rezoning request is in opposition to the comprehensive plan and does not promote orderly growth. Therefore, staff finds that the proposed rezoning request does not conform with the goals and policies of the envisioned 2045 comprehensive plan and recommends denial of rezoning request 25-02 to rezone the subject property from A1 Agriculture to C Commercial. So I do have a couple pictures to go over with you. So you can see that the two pictures and the several trucks and the large expanse of already hard-surfaced or appear to be crushed asphalt. Here's the trucks. There were also, so it was sort of difficult to see, but on the north side of the, of the one building, there were what appeared to be personal vehicles, which I assumed were employees. I didn't stop and knock on the door or go into the two buildings. This is the driveway that goes out to County Highway 122, and that's it. I will take it back to, you can see the trucks, but I will go back to the site photo. I'd be glad to answer any questions you have.
Any questions?
I'm sure.
Go ahead, Adam.
Was this Mr. Shears that asked for this application back in twenty twelve? Was that right then?
He, he request, he asked.
For the sheds to be built?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I was wondering.
Yes, he did.
Okay, alright.
And he was told specifically it was not to be used for commercial activity.
Okay.
And that is often, that's often the fear that, that we, the concern that we have when we grant larger buildings like this is that suddenly they turn into business, um, they can turn into businesses.
Cindy?
Is the driveway, was that an approved agricultural driveway?
Um, I did not check into that, so I, I can't say, uh, if it was a field approach or, or a driveway, but, um, uh, a good question. I didn't check into that with the county highway department, but they are, there is a driveway there.
How has this been taxed? Has it been taxed commercials? Has it been taxed agriculture the whole time?
It's been taxed agriculture.
Okay, so that's a problem too.
Yeah. And the, and they obtained building, well, the buildings may or may not be built to commercial, uh, code requirements and the two that are, the two larger buildings that are there.
Is, um, the gas station a mile and a half from this?
Yes, it's a mile and a half to the east, or sorry, west.
Any other questions?
Not right now.
Okay, thanks Scott. Is the petitioner here? Please step forward, state your name and address.
Hey, good evening. I'm Bruce Wallen, four seven six two two, two hundred and fifty-second street.
Any questions for him? Cindy?
I'd just like to have an explanation because it's a mess.
Sure. Um, and go ahead and, where do you want me to start?
How did we go from a agricultural building to a commercial building and how, and, and do you know about the driveway? I mean, was that, was that a, a, a field approach before or a?
You know, I guess I don't know. Um, the, the landowner currently is not the landowner that I would assume, uh, in twenty twelve, applied for a permit, a billing permit, right? Irregardless, you know, of course, we understood this problem and it's like, um, been pretty fortunate over the last five years to grow pretty substantially in our business. Um, this was a place that I had the ability to, to access, to rent just some space, just to park some equipment. Uh, the sheds are there certainly, um, no officing, no repair facilities, strictly a place to store equipment. The personal vehicles that he saw on the north side, correct, those are drivers that come to work, uh, get in their vehicle and, and go to work every day. I don't want to speak out of turn here for the sake of the, the highway departments. We did apply for a.
Driveway?
Yeah, not a driveway, the ability to create a radii, uh, just because it, it's just a standard, what a thirty-two foot drive, I believe is what you'd get. So that's something we'd taken, um, taken kind of seriously the last few years and looking at this, it's like, alright, we need to, to be a little smarter, certainly. We came to the, to the courthouse to apply for a commercial zoning strictly because we know it's not right. Uh, I'm not here to, I mean, we're not hiding anything. We're certainly not going to go anyplace in business. It, it's extremely visible, right? The, the highway department, I mean, they've been really gracious. They know I said, we're all part of the problem, right? Um, when it comes to, to use of our county roads and quite frankly, we do a lot of business. Uh, we, we considerably pay a lot of, uh, taxes. I just want to do right by obviously you people and, uh, have the ability to, to have a space to do what we need to do correctly.
So do you own this property?
Correct.
When did you purchase the property? Did you build those buildings?
It's under contract right now, a CFD over the next three years.
So you just, so when did you move into those agricultural buildings?
Oh, I bet we've parked equipment there for years.
So you weren't the one that was paying the agricultural taxes when it was being used as commercial?
No.
So it was owned by somebody else, so somebody else has been doing that?
Correct. So, and this is where it all stems from. It's like, if we're going to do this, goodness sakes, I've been around, our business is a hundred and three years old. I'm not, uh, um, hopefully not going to fail at this point.
We still have, we still have a big problem.
For sure.
So, so you do own the property now or you're just in contract and you're working towards that?
Contract for ownership, yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions for him? Thank you.
Sure.
Anyone else in the audience care to address this item?
Madam Chairman, I did want to add one thing, that should this be rezoned, they still will need a conditional use permit to operate this facility within the C commercial district. It's not a permitted use. So I just wanted to put that out there for everyone to, so we're all on the same page. That if this gets rezoned, they, they will need to come back for a conditional use permit.
Question for Scott. Scott, is this automatically going to the commission already?
Yes, it will, it will go to the commission on the date that, um, the chairperson read, um, and they, it will go to the, it'll go to the county commission with whatever recommendation you make tonight.
Then I'm wondering about all of the problems that are behind this, that, you know, so do we have to address any of that stuff? I mean, it's been.
Well, with rezonings.
There's a stack of things here to be addressed and so I'm wondering, is any of that our responsibility or are we just focusing on the one part and the commission's going to take care of it?
So when, when, when you're dealing with a rezoning request, you are only looking at whether it's an appropriate land use. So y- you cannot, uh, put conditions on a rezoning request, so we can't put conditions on there that, um, that they pay or that they, uh, get an approach permit or hours of operation. I mean, that's, that's what's considered a conditional rezoning and those have been struck down in the courts. So it's either, it basically, it's either, uh, the options that are open to you tonight are you can recommend approval, you can recommend denial, or you can continue it if you need more time for consideration, but those are really your three options tonight.
Okay, that answers my question. Okay, so there's no one from the audience that is opposing this either, so I'll hand it back to the commissioners.
Madam Chair, I'll start something here, I guess. The fact that there is nobody in the audience opposing this and the fact that they've been in business for a hundred and three years, they probably serve every township and community in Minnehaha County, I would be in support of this tonight. I, I do think we need to, you know, compromise and the fact that he's coming to us, it's in plain sight, you know, wanting to fix the problem, I think stands for something. And I think if this family asks for support for this business, we'd have them lined up all the way to the highway and, and down some, so I guess I would be in support of this tonight, so.
Anyone else? Cindy?
I'm, I'm not going to support it, not because I don't think Wallen's a good place because we buy gas there too. Um, I think it's the wrong spot, but also we're the planning commission and we can say one thing and the county commission can address all these issues that are around and surrounding this and they can make the decision about whether they think this is appropriate. The planning department has told us they don't think it's appropriate and there's a lot of reasons why it's not the right spot for it. It's very unfortunate that you guys got stuck in this position because this is just very frustrating, but it is agricultural land. It doesn't fit in any of the plans that we've worked on for a long time, twenty thirty-five. We're going on to the next plan here pretty soon. We did twenty thirty-five a long time ago. And so I'm not going to support it. It, I mean, they can do what they want, but I'm not going to support it because I don't feel it's right and the fact that it's going to go to the commission and they will dig into it. I think that that's a more appropriate place to make final decisions on, on this, but I can't support it.
Can we make any more comments, sir?
I'll take a question from you, if that's okay. Can I ask a question?
Alright, sure, if you step forward, she has a question.
I'm asking a question, so you can come forward. And I'd ask you to state your.
I'm Todd Ives, I live at sixteen hundred West Wicklow in Sioux Falls.
And I'm just asking you what your comment was.
Oh, sure, thank you. So I was just, you know, regarding to the spot zoning that was referenced in, in some of the material here. You know, it's, appears that spot zoning happens all the time. We, we see acres of residential pop up along the highway all around us and to say, you know, spot zoning for commercial should never occur, just doesn't seem to make sense to me because who's to say that in twenty years or fifteen or five years, someone else might want to put something commercial right next to us. We are sitting in an area, we've got the, the owner of the residence with us here tonight as well. Um, that's, that's right within that peninsula there. And so I, I'm just saying that spot zoning is happening all the time and that happens out when you're in the rural areas and sooner or later it develops one way or the other. And so I would just think, uh, you would reconsider at least that point, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chairman, can I respond?
Sure, Scott, go ahead.
So I, I would take exception to what was just said because we do not, um, have spot zoning occurring where we are rezoning properties from A-one agriculture to rural residential. I think what the, what the person that just testified indicate or what they're observing, if you just look at our agenda tonight, how many building eligibility's we moved around, you're seeing development that's occurring based on the transfer of building eligibility's, of clustering them and then that developing. But I think if you look back and you, you realize this as well, we've had, we have had requests where people have wanted to rezone property to rural residential in the middle of, of, of agriculture property and we have denied those. So I just want to state for the record that we're not out spot zoning properties all over the county.
Okay, thank you, Scott. Commissioners? I'll entertain a motion.
I'm going to make a motion to deny, um, because it's going to go to the commission and so in a couple of weeks, that's where it's going to be.
I don't totally agree with that. I, it is going to the commission, but I think we need to make a recommendation based off of what we believe here, here tonight, so I don't think, just because it's going to the commission's a reason to deny it, I guess.
I need a section, sorry, Ryan, I need a second before we can discuss it.
Sorry, I'm not going to second that. I'll second that then.
Okay, now you can go ahead, sorry.
I mean, we need these services all over and they, you know, and I'll beat, beat the drum. I mean, we, it's a mile and a half from their other business. What a better place to do it. They got, they've made the driveways, they, they do a good job of keeping it up, they, their, their neighbors, I mean, there's nobody in the audience opposing this, so I, that's just my feelings, so, thank you.
Any other further discussion? Okay, I have a motion for denial on rezoning of twenty-five dash oh two. All those in favor of the denial?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
I think we're split two to two. Okay, so it's up to me to make the decision.
That's correct.
I have a vote on the denial. So item number nine, which is a rezoning of twenty-five dash oh two, the position is that we voted on the denial of that. Move on to old business. Scott, do you want to address the appeal?
Yes, um, last, you may recall that we, uh, indicated that we had an appeal of a conditional use permit for a short-term rental for Linda Vale. This was out by Wild Water West by the Blue Haven Barn. They also own the Blue Haven Barn. That appeal of that conditional use permit took place last Tuesday and, uh, the, the neighbor that appealed it and the applicant were both present and the county commission upheld your recommendation to allow the short-term rental, so I just wanted to report on that.
Any new business?
No.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion, oh, good. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.